Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at seven fourteen P M. Thank you for waiting. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of today's tonight's agenda and resolution have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mister Cruz, can you please call attendance?
Yes, Mister Walker?
Yes.
Miss Farah?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Vazza?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes, here.
We have corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and confidential session of April eighth?
I'll move it, Denise.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second that.
Second by Miss Prisco. Uh, can we have a call, please?
Mister Walker?
Yes.
This is Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Prizala?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to our superintendent report, Miss Giuseppe.
So, um, my report tonight is gonna uh primarily be a joint report with Mister Cruz as we are having our final budget hearing, but I did wanna uh let the board know, um, Mrs. Thomas and I are um uh getting ready to complete the Trees for Schools grant again where we're looking to plant forty-five trees, looking for a grant from Sustainable New Jersey and um uh the College of New Jersey jointly to um uh to kind of plant some trees primarily all over the district, but a lot of them down by the turf uh where that is really a big heat sink because of the turf uh and the shade would go a long way in twenty years or so.
Can I interrupt you? I hate to interrupt you in the middle of your report.
Yeah.
We've found if when we have planted trees near, you know, the the carpeted or the the rubbery playground equipment, we found that like ten or fifteen years later, the roots have ended up hurting.
Infiltrating?
Infiltrating and and causing lumps and and a bunch of problems, right? And and I rode by the F M Brown the other day. It was off on spring break last week, and I saw there's kind of tree. It looked like a tree ceremony.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that.
Um, and I and I I rode by and saw that. I thought it was great, but I just wanna know, is there any thread or has been discussed that like fifteen years down the road, we we might get headaches because of these lovely trees that we put in?
You know what? I it it has not been discussed. I will tell you that those trees that were planted as a result of Arbor Day, that they were donated to um Verona High School uh by the Verona um High School and H B W Middle School Environmental Clubs. Um, and they chose the location and the species of tree with the Shetree Commission. So, um, I can certainly uh have Laura reach out to the turf company and see if there's any restrictions.
Yeah, in fact, I would be not. I think Laura's lovely and and really good at her job. I but I'd rather have Jorge as the B A reach out.
Okay, okay, totally.
And it's because I I I know that we had a a three hundred thousand dollar project that we didn't think we were gonna have to have, and it was all because of the tree roots.
Okay.
Coming up. Sorry to interrupt your report.
That's okay. Um, so I did have a conversation with um the the people at Trees for Schools. I reached out to find out last year when we we were denied. Uh, we did not deny. We didn't. We were not awarded the grant. And um the primary reason we were not awarded the grant was we we are not a a school in need. We are still not a school in need comparatively. However, they changed the weighting uh to make that component less weight. Um, she did say our application was excellent in every way um and and gave me a couple of tips on how to move some of our funding requests around, and so we have a much better chance of getting that award. Um, uh, we also, as I I was gonna say, we also um had a very lovely ceremony with um Town Council was there, um Mayor um Tamburo, um the Shetree Commission. Um, both sets of environmental clubs from the high school and the middle school with their advisors, Mrs. Thomas, and um again, my head doesn't work all the time.
Chris Walker driving by.
Chris Walker driving by. Um, it will come to me in about thirty seconds. Um. No, I'm talking about the the advisor for the middle school. Um, and I'm I'm drawing a blank and Nadia Dominic, Mrs. Dominic. Um, Mrs. Dominic, and uh they were there, and we we took some great pictures. I don't seem to have access uh to my Facebook page anymore. I have to talk to Mister Bellage about why I can't get to it from work. Uh, so as soon as I can get to the Facebook page, I will post uh the pictures of it. It was a really nice event. It was a beautiful day too, so we lucked out. Um, and we are busy staffing uh for those few positions that we do have um open. Uh, right now, there are six positions that we're trying to fill. And uh we are getting more applicants than we got last year, which is a a positive sign. Uh, and keeping our fingers crossed that uh we'll be able to fill them quickly. I had two interviews today. Uh, both gave me a tentative yes, so uh that would take us down to four. And um we will uh, I'm sorry, take, yes, down to four, and uh they'll be on the agenda next on the next meeting. Um, we'll go on, I guess, go on to uh Ryan, and then we'll get back into the budget presentation.
But real quick, if if we could, Jorge, if you could give us a an update for the next board meeting about the the trees, because we also thought like shade in the area the kids would play in was gonna be a really good thing until we realized that like, that's exactly the reason that that we we had the damage that we did. So if you can give us that update, that would be helpful. So I know it's right where like the the left field wall would would be like where where F M Brown kind of meets the the high school field. Uh, and I I would hate to see that area kind of ruin the whole field if if.
It's the lower, the lower.
And maybe it may not. It wouldn't happen, but I'd like us to get some kind of professional opinion on that.
Thank you. Moving on, uh Ryan, if you want to give us the student uh report, that'd be great.
Good evening. Okay. All right. Okay, so what's really lovely do it lovely day today, you know? No, but uh in news regarding uh spring sports, uh the boys tennis team had a five oh win today against New York Central. The golf team uh actually had a big conference win against West Essex. I think it was yesterday or um this past weekend, and last Thursday was the the track senior night meet, and besides celebrating, of course, our wonderful senior student athletes, uh Junior Gwen Neal did achieve a a new school record for the two hundred meter race for the girl shack team, so congrats to her. And there's also today, there's also a girls' across victory against uh Columbia High School and girl soft softball also scored a win against Newark Academy five days ago. I'm not sure if you guys have seen it, but um Miss Carvahal and National Art Honor Society here at V H S, they did a like phenomenal job of painting the dugout on the lower field. It was absolutely amazing. So thank you for them for doing such a great job and, you know, always keeping up that Verona pride, of course. So, and uh this week, Deca uh the Deca Club had sent off uh six students in total to compete in the Deca International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida. And as of next week, May sixth, uh A P Testing will be officially beginning at V H S, so uh that's something to quote unquote look forward to for my fellow V H S students, but uh this Thursday evening at seven P M. in the V H S auditorium, uh the music department will be presenting the annual spring concert, which features the concert band, concert choir, concert choir and chamber choir. So it'll be a very fun uh fun, fun day, and it's great programs, choir and band, and it's a very, very good repertoire. It's a really fun show, and I do recommend everyone to see it, especially this being uh probably the last concert of the year. And I say that, but there's also a concert a day before, because the concert band had been given the opportunity to perform alongside the Rutgers University Symphony Band tomorrow night at Rutgers, New Brunswick. And this joint concert will be held at the Nicholas Music Center at seven thirty P M. And I would also additionally extend my congratulations to the class of two thousand and twenty-six National Honor Society members who had passed a rigorous assessment of scholarship, character, and leadership that we could serve the induction. So, I mean, we all know V H S is very academically rigorous school, so just like the little round of applause for our athletes. I mean, uh students, sorry. It's all good, and that'll be all for tonight. Thank you.
Very much, Ryan. Really appreciate that. Um, and then moving on to the budget presentation from Mister Cruz.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let me uh share this presentation here. So this is our final uh public budget hearing. Uh, so tonight, uh the board will hear uh the final presentation, um, which is in fact, uh hasn't changed from what we presented uh last month. Uh, the county received uh the the budget submission on uh March nineteenth. We received it uh the approval from the county superintendent on April ninth. And pretty much um uh what was presented and everything else was approved. Uh, there is one change on the equalization um value of Verona. Uh, at the time when the county office uh received the the budget proposal, uh they only had the two thousand uh twenty-four numbers. Uh, so they wanted it to be based off of that, even though the township already had copies of the two thousand and twenty-five. It wasn't posted um in the county. And and if you go to the county website now, two thousand and twenty-five is now there, but they they wanted us to use the two thousand and twenty-four valuation.
Does that have any impact on the numbers or our budget?
No, okay, no. So real quick, this is the uh the timeline. Um, we're finally at the end of this budgetary timeline, which is uh April twenty ninth. Uh, the final adoption um to the board. Uh, if if it's not adopted tonight, um, the very last day that the board could actually approve the budget um will be May eleventh, and and at that time, since we don't have a meeting before May eleventh, we will have to do a special meeting um before that. So our mission statements, I'm gonna jump right into uh our budget goals has not changed from the last presentation. Um, and this is basically the intent and the purpose um and and the value add that we're bringing on the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year. On the uh projected increases, we we have a proposed budget with a tax levy of three point five three uh percent increase, which is a additional increase of uh one point three million. Uh, projected increase in our revenue um from other sources is two hundred and eighty-three thousand. Uh, estimated increase in state aid or the actual state aid that's gonna be uh the that the actual increase of six percent is a hundred and sixty-three thousand nine oh two. Uh, bringing the total uh increase in revenue of one point eight million. And then we also are bringing over the excess surplus from last fiscal uh of nine hundred and thirteen thousand and bringing a total uh estimated revenue of one point seven three three five oh eight, five oh five. So this chart here uh is uh the same comparison chart that we had in the previous presentation. Uh, here we can see the year um over year uh comparison and uh the difference in uh the one-year change from the current uh fiscal year, which is the twenty-five uh twenty-four, twenty-five school year versus the proposed budget of uh twenty-five, twenty-six. The proposed expenditures, um, which is the same value of our revenue. It's forty-five million six hundred ninety-six thousand one seventy-seven. Um, most of which is uh general ed instruction, uh followed by benefits and fringe costs. Uh, special education is actually broken down into different categories. We have a special ed instruction, special ed um out of district tuition. Uh, and then related services, which is uh speech, um occupational therapy, uh physical therapy and related services. And the other sections are smaller, which is gonna be a custodial services, maintenance for our schools, uh school administration at four one point three percent, and education media at less than one percent. In this uh pie chart, we have the actual dollar figures of that previous pie chart. Uh, it's might be small to see it here, but um this presentation will become public on our website tomorrow uh along with uh the user-friendly um budget. Again, this is another slide of a comparison chart um of the last three fiscal years, which is the current, the current fiscal year twenty-five and right in the center uh comparing to the previous school year of uh fiscal year twenty-four and the proposed budget for uh fiscal year twenty-six. And then the same comparison chart um on on the expenditure side, which is the the three years and the one-year change and percentage. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Giuseppe, who will highlight the uh instructional initiatives.
So, um, we are focusing our professional learning and curriculum writing uh for next year on uh the K four, actually K five uh literacy uh program that we're adopting for that address the changes to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards in uh English Language Arts. Uh, we also will be continuing uh professional learning uh with our math programs, our Singapore math programs in uh K eight, which are dimensions, K five and amplify in six, seven, and eight. We also adopted Amplify's uh products in um Algebra One Geometry and Algebra Two, so we'll be continuing to provide professional development in that area. Uh, we are um expanding our social studies history alive, um and and we are in the third year of its implementation. And we are continuing to support the S T C curriculum, which is um the Smithsonian Curriculum in Science K eight. Um, that is uh an area that we will have to eventually change. Uh, it is not standards aligned. Um, and uh while it's a good program in terms of hands-on uh and minds-on science instruction, it is uh outdated with regard to um linking up with the next generation science standards, also known as the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science. Um, uh, year, we are in year three of uh the letters training, although we did not do letters training this year. Um, we will uh be bringing letters training back next year for uh those few teachers that have not yet been trained in letters. And that is a uh a reading program, uh reading and spelling pro, training program for teachers. We are uh continuing to administer map growth assessments um in math and reading to students in grades one through eight and Algebra One at the high school. And we have to continue to update our curriculum documents with regard when according to our five-year cycle and the um standards adoption by the state. Um, we had a full year pilot this year of the Positivity Project Character Education at H B W and smaller pilots at the elementary schools. So uh next year will be a full year pilot uh at the elementary schools of the Positivity Project, which is the character education program we've spoken about several times at the board level. Um, and uh we are continuing to dissect the standards. Uh, we are working um in building for next year uh more professional learning communities. We will be in year two of the focused teacher evaluation model, year two of the focused uh school leader evaluation model. Um, we're bringing back some training in how to differentiate instruction to strengthen tier-one uh uh instruction. And um we'll be in year, I'm gonna say one and a half, uh using our new uh response to intervention tier, multi-tier system of support intervention program. Um, and uh we will continue to um uh have a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging program. Um, we did get some news on that uh regarding um this uh the federal government's request for us to validate that we are not violating any illegal D E I programs, the State Department of Education. Illegal D E I programs. Yeah, I know, it's laughable. Um, but they uh the N J D O E did come out and say there is no reason for each district to certify that we are following Title Six um uh of the Administrative Code, because every time we fill out an entitlement grant such as I D E A and and uh and E S E A for Title One and Title Four and Title Two funding, in order to submit that grant, each district has to certify that they're following administrative code. So uh at this point, we are um saying no to individual certifications on that, but um I I maintain that our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging program never was never used to select anybody to any specific program and was not used to discriminate in any way. It is used for the opposite, is used to make people feel included and and to make sure that um we are caring for our students with disabilities, our students of different cultures, our students of different religions, and our students that look different than we all that that I do, that you do, that whatever. So um it is something that I'm not willing to take down off our website and uh or or keep out of presentations like this. Uh, special services will continue to offer all of the programs that um they they do, and this is, you know, this is one of the reasons why you look at special education costs, special education uh in is a makes up about little under twenty percent of our student population and is a much greater percentage of our uh budget cost, because we offer these programs uh that our students need and 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 we have a moral obligation as well as a legal obligation to offer these programs. So we have the L S S program, which is um a a cross-section of um students, uh, I'm sorry, students with uh autism spectrum disorders, students with emotional regulation disorders. Um, uh, we have learning and language programs uh across all of our uh grade levels pre-K twelve. Um, we have resource room, which is replacement in math, language arts, um and uh across all grade levels from grades two to twelve. Um, supplemental pull-out and and instruction uh at grades uh pre-K to four, in-class instruction um and uh which is like in-class resource or in-class support, um supplemental aids and services, and extended school year. Related services, as Mister Cruz said earlier, are speech, language, uh counseling, O T P T uh behavioral services with the district behavior uh analysts. Uh, we provide professional development to support both our paraprofessionals and our special educators and um um related services uh to ensure that everybody is current with the law and best practice. Um, we have sensory rooms in each building that are maintained, although they, I believe they were all gifted to us from child. Uh, we do maintain them. Actually, landing is 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 increasing the size of theirs and moving it. Uh, we will continue the great work that Care Plus New Jersey does, uh providing therapeutic services for our students in grades five through twelve. Um, and uh continuing to develop the L L D Life Skills Program at the high school. Uh, that's in its second full year. Um, we are continuing to increase uh increase um uh I C I or in class and in uh in class resource and uh elementary. And we are not adding any additional special education staff positions for next year. We thought we might have to to increase the inclusion, but we do not have to increase uh by any special ed for next year. Uh, we uh we, as Mister Cruz said earlier, um and we said uh in the last meeting, we are increasing the paraprofessional pay rate, so their salary guide will 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 change uh to a more acceptable level for them. Our powers work very hard, and we hope uh we'll be able to encourage more paraprofessionals uh from uh surrounding areas to come and work with us.
So in this uh slide here, we have our our comp districts. Um, as you uh all saw last month, it's the same slide on which actually compares the budgetary per pupil costs. Uh, and then these numbers are on the state's um taxpayer guides for education's uh spending uh based off of um, I believe it was uh two thousand and twenty-four. And uh just to give you uh some of the categories, there are, there are actually about sixteen indicators on that guide. Uh, these are just some um that kind of stuck out, which is actually classroom supplies extracurricular. And then uh the average property taxes is not on that uh guide. Uh, that's this will be in the uh in the county uh website. Um, so for Verona, the average uh property tax is thirteen four oh seven as of uh last school year. So the tax levy increase um and the comparison uh year over year, uh we see that the general uh fund increase is one million three hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred five. Uh, the debt service, because we did have a refunding of our two thousand and twenty-five, um, I'm sorry, two thousand and fifteen referendum bond. Uh, it is bringing a savings, so then the interest rate has dropped uh uh in comparison to um this current school year, so uh five thousand eight hundred eighty-four, and and then we'll we'll probably see that actually going down in the future as well. Uh, so the net uh change is one million three hundred fifty-six thousand four twenty-one. When it comes to the impact on the homeowners, um and Verona, we're we're using the two thousand and twenty-four uh township valuation of uh uh two point, almost two point four billion. And with that, we take the the budget tax levy of uh forty-three thousand seven seven six to sixty-seven. The rate is uh point zero eighteen twenty-four. And the average uh home value is four hundred thirty-four thousand five seventy-five, uh making the school tax um on the average home uh seven thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and five cents. So the year-over-year uh increase is uh two hundred and seventy-seven thousand and seventy-eight cents. On a two percent uh tax levy, it would have been uh one hundred seventy dollars. So they the change between the two percent and the one point five three percent, it's a an additional uh hundred seven dollars.
Just just one question, just to clarify, it's it's two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, not two hundred seventy-seven thousand.
No, no, two, two hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
So the the net impact, yes. So the net impact on the average uh home is two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. So so more or less looking at this number, if you know, your your uh taxes, if you're paying more than thirteen thousand dollars, you're you're not, you're basically uh impact is gonna be a little higher than that. Um, if you're paying under that thirteen thousand dollar uh for your home, it's gonna be under that um average. Uh, so this is just the average based on that thirteen thousand dollar um average tax. Uh, so some takeaways with this is um with this three point five three percent tax levy increase, um is that two hundred and seventy-seven dot two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents per household on a average um home assessment of four hundred and thirty-four thou-thousand five seventy-five. Uh, of that tax levy, um or or the actual uh tax, uh the school tax on the resident on last year was two uh seven thousand six fifty, uh making the tax rate for every hundred dollars of valuation is a dollar and eighty-two cents uh for school tax.
And I just wanna point out, um, for those that didn't watch the last two budget hearings, um, this include that uh extra um one point five three percent. And I just want to point out, um, for those that didn't watch the last two budget hearings, um, this include that uh extra um one point five three percent is because we uh took a hard hit um in increase in health benefit costs to the point where the state allowed us to increase above the two percent um as an offset to um increased health benefit costs. Uh, it's also important to point out that we could have gone higher than that simply because um Verona is underfunded by state aid by about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, so uh we're not choosing to do that. Instead, we're choosing to uh riff to administrative positions in order to get to that, to make our expenditures match our revenues.
Want to have any questions, comments?
Um, I I just have uh uh two comments and and maybe a question. Uh, again, uh Jorge and Diane, uh, this is really, really good work at making um squeezing blood out of a stone. So we, we, I I thank you for your, for your efforts there. Um, a question I have on Jorge's um uh mention of the um the surplus fund that we have been drawing from, um, what steps are we going to be able to take going forward to keep that fund um active and healthy uh for something that we can rely on in the probably the next uh two, three years?
So on, in the past, we've always been able to uh have a about a million dollar surplus uh over the last three years. Uh, it's becoming a little more challenging. I think last year, it was the first year that we saw some indicators of our expenditures were really um right on the money, meaning that we, every, every dollar that we budgeted for on the expenditure side of the budget uh left, left the door, uh meaning that there was actually no savings on on the expenditure. So we were basically um uh it 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 got to a point where the surplus that we gain is only on the revenue side, meaning that if we said um our budget is forty uh million dollars, we actually ended up with forty-one million instead of that forty million. So um right now for this uh school year, we're probably going to look at something very similar to that is um it's the only way we're able to generate a surplus will be on the revenue side, meaning that um there are additional grants or there's uh additional revenue on the extraordinary aid uh for special education that um that we we actually under-projected. Uh, also miscellaneous revenues, um, it it's not a um a huge uh piece, but um a lot of times even um tuition from non-residential uh families coming into Verona, that that's also a revenue uh that does help uh the budget and balancing it out and and help us generate the surplus. So I think to be fair, um, if we get close to a little over uh seven hundred thousand, that's actually, I think it's it's going to be a healthy, and um I'm not sure if we're going to get close to a million. I I think it's going to be harder to uh do that year over year, but um uh three-quarters of a million, I think, will be conservative and will be fair to maintain.
Thank you. And um just one other follow-up comment to um Superintendent De Giuseppe. I really appreciate your comments on uh sticking with your commitment uh to the D E and I program. We um very much appreciate uh speaking up for those um that may be on the margins. And um now is more time than any that we uh continue to um support those who need our support. So thank you for that, Diane.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I I do, um, the only other place that uh we looked at to see if we can help our budget for next year, or at least I was looking recently, um, uh, is if you have excess monies left over at the end of this year that you can buy some of the items that you are budgeted for next year. We don't have a lot left. There's a, it it's it's amazing how close we pay our budget down to, uh, and I know um name from the auditor. Ray, Ray said that last year, our our earlier in the year at our order presentation, how how close we pay down our budget. Um, it's going to be like that again. I was hoping that we had some, you know, some money that we could carry over because next year's budget is going to be hard and the budget after that's going to be harder.
I don't think we need to be apologetic about this budget at all. I think that if if you just moved to Verona and now you're seeing uh, you know, your tax increase go go up more than you expected, then you didn't do your homework because you didn't understand that the Verona Board of Education is going to look to supplement its kids' education to the maximum extent possible every single time. Um, and and if you're someone that has lived in Verona, that then you should have known that the Verona Board of Education is going to look to supplement its kids' educations every single time. You know, that that slide that shows of of our district factor group that we're we're the, we're in last place as far as the amount we invest in our kids. And you know, that, that's not a thing, maybe boards in Verona in the past have done, I'm not saying have you been here forever, but like that was a just long time ago. Maybe they viewed this as like a a positive for their district, but you know, and and I'm sure there were circumstances that made them feel that way, but it it's hard for me not to look at that as being a short-sighted decision. Um, especially in light of the fact that now we're we're capped with with the amount that we can increase. Um, so uh I'd like to see this district because let's let's be fair, if if you live in Verona and you and you're a homeowner, there's a highly likely chance that by the time you sell your house, you're going to have lived here for free and then get paid on top of it. That and and I and I know the council and the mayor's office and and the things they're doing, that that's a big part of it. But a huge part of it is the perception of the success and then the of of our school district. Um, so this is a a budget that I'm going to vote confidently yes for, Paul, really, thank you.
Question. Um, thank you very much for that too, and thank you for your transparency. Always, it's important. Um, I think also just to to piggyback Chris on what you said, um, I agree. And I also think that if you look at some of our neighboring districts, you see the struggles that um many are having. And I will say that I'm very proud as Verona resident, as Verona parent, as a Verona board member, that um we have great leaders that have put us in a position that we are now. So again, thank you. But also that we've been thinking about this ahead of time and kind of planning ahead. So so I think that's great. I have a quick question going back to curriculum. So I know we're implementing the new K-five literacy program. Um, I believe that we're keeping foundations or some type of structured literacy component in that program or having foundations as well. With the letters, um, training for teachers, I think it's wonderful. I'm always a fan of professional development. But my question is, what is the, what is the plan? How are we utilizing that? So I I understand that letters is different than, say, an Orin program certification. Um, but how are we leveraging the P D and the training that the teachers are getting moving forward, especially with the new literacy program in place?
So I'm going to be very honest with you. While I I did attend um the the committee that picked this literacy program, um, I am not an expert in it and and I can have Julie Peter come to our, one of our meetings and discuss that. From what I understand of letters, it really is just teacher training um uh with regard to better um pedagogy in reading instruction and spelling instruction. Uh, the way it's it's worked in terms of um it's rollout, I'm not going to say it's always consistent because not all of our teachers have been trained, right? So, but the people that train our teachers are our reading interventionists who work with our teachers. So they're in and out of the classroom, they're pulling kids in and out. Um, not that it's their job to make sure that it's implemented effectively, but when you're owning something and you're teaching something and you're supporting teachers in their journey and in doing that work, um, they are invested in the fact that that um uh the two reading interventions are invested in it. And Mrs. Peters invested in it. She um believes in letters and uh, which is why I was just a little surprised that it wasn't a mandatory training right from the very beginning. It's it's a lot. It's a huge, uh, so much so that um there's colleges, uh, two colleges that will accept their training here toward a graduate degree in reading.
Yeah, I think my, so thank you for that. And I think my my thinking is really as with, as we're looking at our budgetary constraints moving forward even to the next years and as we're bringing in a new literacy program and along with any new program comes professional development and an expense app in that professional development. So my question really is the, not not question, I shouldn't say, but my thinking here and something that maybe we can follow up on is how, like what that looks like for the next few years? And if we'll continue with these additional P Ds that we're getting, like the letters or like the Orin, or if we're going to just kind of stick with the professional development and the program that we're bringing in.
Yes.
What what that kind of looks like, professional development wise. So I guess we can talk about that even at Ed Committee.
And then, and and I think there's so few teachers that have not been trained on literacy. It's such a tiny group.
Yeah.
It's just, in my mind, it's just to level out everyone's understanding so that we have more consistency across the elementary E L A instruments.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We just have a quick question and a comment. So my question first is, um, Mr. Cruz, what is it the tuition cost right now for per pupil for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year for going forward?
Uh, the per pupil is close to eighteen thousand. It's a seventeen thousand.
It pretty much matches what's.
Yes.
I mean, what we, what do we charge for tuition? For tuition, that's what I meant, yeah.
Oh, you mean like non-resident tuition?
Yeah, they don't match what's on that chart.
So I believe we we do charge now, um, the the board last year approved the seventeen thousand rate. Uh, so that's actually the new rate um that we do charge, I believe. And we we could double check that.
If I recall, there was some students that we kind of, because they were already students here, we allowed them to continue to pay the lower rate.
Teacher, any children of teacher, right, right.
Teachers, but if you're brand new and you live in name your town and you want to send your kids to Verona, I believe it's seventeen.
For students in kindergarten, it's thirteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars. For students in grades one through five, it's fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars. And students, for students in grades six to eight, it's fifteen thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars. And in uh at the high school level, sixteen thousand zero ninety-one. And those are, those are numbers that were, are given to us by the state.
Um, okay.
And then for the returning students that were already in the system, K-four seventy-six fifty-four, five-eight seventy-six fifty-four, and nine-twelve thirteen three oh five. So for those students that weren't going to get a huge fifty percent increase.
Right, yeah. Thank you for that. Um, and then my other is just a comment. Um, thank you both for 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 everything, for all your hard work in making this budget work. But I do just want to make a comment about um I know when we had our joint meeting and then there was discussions um out there on social media about how things were going to be cut and taken away from our students. And that's the last thing that any of us on this board will ever want to do is take away a sports program or an arts or music program. So I think I can speak for everyone up here that that is not what was meant in our discussions of cutting anything um out of our students and our children. So that is what, just to make that on record.
I will uh concur. I I'm the one that made the statement um that that this is what schools have to do in certain times when um when money is tight and money is clearly tight. We're not at that point yet, uh, but we are, after all, a school district. We're here first for education and having extracurricular is phenomenal. It's, you know, at our athletics program or some, many of our students go to school, go to college because of our athletics program because they get scholarships. The last thing we want to do is is cut that, but we have an obligation to teach kids um the curriculum and the standards of the state of New Jersey first. And to talk about that, I mean, I had a conversation with a parent today and it was a, it was a lovely conversation and I think she was um, you know, uh genuinely happy to hear that we're thinking about class size. You know, right now, our our third grade, I'll give you an example, in every building, the lowest, there's one section that's at twenty-two, the rest are at twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, so you know, and this budget does not include splitting a third grade. And which third grade would I split? It's like I have three schools where the third grade is at at least twenty-four, mostly twenty-five, or one has twenty-six. Um, which school do I split? We certainly don't have the money to split all three. So it's a, it's going to get tough uh until we get uh figure out how to um do things differently to save some money. And that may, uh, what may happen first is a a discussion publicly about uh making hybrid neighborhood schools that are grade band schools. So a K-one on uh one side of town, uh two-four on one side of town, a K-one on the other side of town, a two-four on the other side. So you you do have somewhat more neighborhood-y feeling. Uh, but with grade band schools, I can, I can save sections and uh I'd be more productive with the way we we staff our schools.
Third uh question. So I know, um, I believe it was last night was the H B W.
Yes.
Remote, right? How was the, I I wasn't able to go. I had a, I teach a class, but how was the turnout?
Uh, there was probably thirty or forty parents. It was a good turnout.
Okay.
Yeah, and a lot of good questions. A lot of uh the Q and A was actually longer than the actual presentation.
Great, thank you.
And just to add to everyone's, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. You know, it's not an easy budget. Um, I have a feeling next year's budget's probably going to be less easy. Um, so, but thank you for keeping the impact to our students as minimal as possible. Because that really is what we are here to, to to do, to to educate our students. Um, so that's it. Thank you. Don't I? Um, so moving on to committee reports, finance committee was the one who met this month.
Yeah, I I can, yeah, I can take it, uh, Chris. Um, that's all right. Um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you got, yeah, yeah.
We're here.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, so um a lot of old business was on the committee uh meeting last week and of course Jorge covered on the budget. One thing I will flag and it it was mentioned in the budget, uh, what sixteen point eight percent of our expenditures go to um benefits and uh Jorge helped uh negotiate a uh about as good of a contract as we can get uh that covers our um uh medical and uh dental programs. Um, again, we don't, we don't like to see some of these uh prices go up, but that's the reality that we are in. And um, that's all I have to add at this point.
Thank you. Uh, and then so moving on to public comments for agenda action items only. Seeing no one come up, we will move on to discussion items uh for old and new business if anyone would like to discuss anything.
Thank you. I just want to bring up um something for, I know um Mrs. Palmerisi had put something out there regarding our H B W track um about when it's closed. It's obviously closed during school hours and it's also closed during the high school track practice and during their meets from three to six, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturdays from eight to twelve. Um, there has been calls um to the police and to the district about um children riding bicycles, electric bikes and or dirt bikes on the track. So.
And on some of our playgrounds.
Great. So if um we can, I know um I think we may be getting some signs made for, at least, I don't know, that's what I think um Chief Kiranin had mentioned. So I just wanted to make note that if you know of anyone that's driving, riding a bicycle on the track, that it can damage our track.
To, 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 oh, sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I I I wanted to say, you know, it's uh the uh the the amount of um the electric bikes, dirt bikes like that, that are zooming around town are almost becoming, well, not become, almost, they are a safety hazard. I see a lot of kids uh whipping around. Um, and I know this is not necessarily a school issue per se, but I'm just wondering if, particularly in the junior high level, if there's some sort of safety program we can have um or safety presentation that we can have on this. It just seems like it's borderline. I don't want to use the word menace, but it's it's something that you really want to be watching out for when you're driving around town, particularly when they're coming out of the schools.
I'll speak to um V P D and see if we can partner with them uh to provide something for our kids.
And it. I'd rather that be something that comes, originates from V P D.
Yeah.
Agreed. We're we're not trained to to know about this. So if they, if they could assist, I think it'd be great.
And I do, and and please, I do believe our our policy, our our board, we have a board policy about not allowing Electric type of bikes, you know, on school grounds. In fact, I remember going through it last year when I was on the that committee, so um.
Be something where like we might wanna rethink that, you know, cuz if if that's gonna be the new norm, then we will have to adapt. I I don't know enough about it to even opine.
Right.
One way or the other, but I.
Yeah, I think if if we do have, maybe it is some a policy we can look at and put some. Regulations on how they're used on school grounds, like they, you know, if someone's using it to commute from one side of town to the other. Uh fine, but you can't be riding it in, I don't know, is there electric electric mode? I don't have one, um like you have to use like your pedals um when you're on school grounds or or whatnot.
pedals.
Current policy. The current policy fifty-four, fifty-five fourteen, use of vehicles on school grounds. Um students are not permitted to bring any motorized bicycle, skateboard, scooter, roller skates, hoverboard, or any other motorized motorized mode of transportation. On school grounds during the school day, so we can uh we can adjust, um yeah.
Bring it before the school day and park it, right, and then drive home after the school day, right, like, right? Like you you filed the BOSI.
And then just speaking also about the um the use of the track, last year um there was an event that was held at the track. Um a lo- very large event, and it happened at the same time as the Valerie Fund Walk. It was an event that was um taking place from one of the local gyms that used our whole facility behind HBW. The track and the grass area, and I went over there because people were calling me about people driving. Vehicles onto the track to get the equipment set up, so that's how it was brought to the attention that they were out there. There was hundreds of people using out there, they had porta-johns. Um and I believe this event is occurring this year again on June seventh, the same day as the Valerie Fund Walk, so it's it's a crazy time in town with that walk. Um they have not come to the district yet for approvals, however, um I they are advertising that they are having this event. Outdoors in Verona, doesn't say where, but I'm assuming they're just. Few large areas.
A few large areas.
Um so they haven't come for approvals or even to fill out paperwork or to add in their insurance policies, so.
Approved, then.
Well, I'm afraid they might just show up.
Mrs. Mrs. Prisco, can we check?
They're not allowed on the field, if 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 they're not approved to be on our field, now we're and and we knowingly know that this is something that could have could occur. Then I then maybe, though Kyle's not here, but perhaps there's a liability in just even being ignorant, is there any way we could? I don't I don't know if there's a soccer team or anything else that might use, have authentic authority to use the fields on on Saturday or Sunday, but. We don't want them on this field if 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 they're not approved for it.
No, so they if they don't have permits, they just can't use it.
Have to, I think, and and Mr. Cruz probably would know, but I think to use any of our facilities, they have to fill out a a form, there has to be insurance, it has to be. Now, are we gonna, if we have kids with a pickup soccer game, are we gonna kick them off the field? Probably not, unless there's something else that's already.
We have our director facilities on standby, I wouldn't even mind paying uh cuz we we don't want this field to get wrecked or this track to be wrecked. I wouldn't mind paying an hourly rate on a whatever date this is. And if if at his judgment, people are using this field in a in a manner that's gonna cause us damage, let let's give him the authority to to contact the Diane and contact the police and kick people out.
Absolutely, any anyone that's using uh board property without authorization is considered a trespassing. Um and at that point, they will be forcefully removed, um so uh at this point, if they are not providing.
We're gonna need, it's weekends, we're gonna need someone to to be on standby to to monitor, right?
Yes, so we.
We can solve this problem once and for all, if we if we just pay overtime for our director facilities to be here on Saturday or Sunday, whatever day this is. Just to make sure this doesn't happen, because if it does happen, the the risk of the fields getting or the track getting damaged seems like it's like my Pam said, might be high. And but we need someone to be the authority on on site.
But for the for this particular event, was there a permit last year?
It was.
There was a permit, okay, so.
But I don't believe, I believe they exceeded their permit.
Okay, so we can assume that they would apply again if.
They applied appropriately, they had their insurance certificate, they had all their ducks in a row, they paid us for the use, but they did exceed number of people.
And they drove on the field.
And they drove on the field, he means to not.
Not approve the permit.
And before we do all this, is it worth asking the town if they have any uh use requests at at um. Uh at the at their field or the county, even if they're planning on maybe moving to the park before we scramble everything to prepare for this?
We'd move to the park because that's where Valerie Fund is, and they have that booked out like the whole weekend. Um the yeah, the Valerie Fund during the park, you you don't wanna go anywhere near there.
Every weekend this time of year in the park is gonna have something.
Right.
Yeah, every big day, right?
That that maybe up at the the field, but that's also where like there's always lacrosse games and. Girls' field hockey is up there in the spring, so that that's pretty hard to book out on a Saturday in June.
I could check with our rec department.
Um yeah, I mean, it's it's worth an ask, I think, that's.
I just wanted to make and put out there that, you know, last year was an issue and it looks like they're planning on this event again this year, so I just wanted to put it on a radar.
Uh using Palmetto, are they?
Hey, is anything else for discussion items? Moving on, do we have any correspondence? We do not, thank you.
No correspondence.
Thank you, moving on to agenda action items. Yeah, we do have to do those. Okay, um can I get a motion to approve um personnel items A one through A?
Thirteen.
Fifteen?
I will move that.
Thirteen, thirteen, please.
I will move that.
Move.
I'll second.
Prisco, second by Mr. Boone, uh any discussions?
No.
Seeing none, can we get roll call, please?
Mr. Walker?
I'm happy to vote first, yes.
Mrs. Farah?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Has.
Mrs. Frazel?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving on to section B, education, can I get a motion to approve items B one through BH?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker.
In.
Second by Ms. Prisco, any discussions? Seeing none, can I uh please have roll call?
Mr. Walker? Mrs. Farah?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Uh Frazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, move, there's nothing under athletics co-curricular and there's nothing under facilities. Moving to finance, can I get a motion for E one through? E? Eleven.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Boone.
Second.
Second by Ms. Prisco, any discussion? I do have a question about E eleven. Um the My School Bucks online payment, that's the same payment processing service that we use for these the food.
Food.
Pomtonian, so we're using it now for Chromebook insurance and fees?
Yes.
Do we currently use that or is this new?
No, it's new.
Okay, do we know what the cost is for when someone's gonna be paying this?
So.
We pay whatever it is for.
So the um the transaction fee is three point five percent um per per transaction on a on a card. Uh so the one, so let's say a Chromebook insurance of uh twenty dollars, it'll it'll be about twenty-one dollars.
Okay, um. Is there a way that people can continue to pay without having to pay the transaction fees?
They can, they could submit a a check to Verona Board of Ed, so that's a another uh alternative for anyone who doesn't want, who wants to avoid the transaction fee will be.
If we advertise that when we.
Yes.
If we advertise it, then I think it's fair, right?
I wanna I wanna advertise it heavily, I I've talked about my uncomfortableness with the mandatory Chromebook insurance, um I I. I'm further uncomfortable, I guess, for having now having to pay a fee to pay that mandatory in insurance, so I I really would like to. Heavily advertise it as check is your option A, this is your option B.
I agree with you.
Um you know, and and again, as well as the, if you feel you need, you know, financial assistance, to please reach out as soon as possible. Um okay, anything else before we go on? Okay, can we please have roll call?
Yes, uh Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farah?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on uh to governance and policy, F one. Uh okay, can I get a motion to table F one?
So moved, second.
Move by Mrs. Ferrer, second by Ms. Prisco, um any discussion? Yeah, yeah, okay, uh can we get roll call for tabling F one?
Yes.
Yes. You go first.
That's where you go first.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farah? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazella?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Uh motion carries on tabling uh F one.
One, okay, so moving on to motion um to approve F two and F three.
So moved.
So moved.
Prisco, second by Mr. Boone, uh any discussion? Seeing none, can we please have roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Sorry.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Uh motion carries on F two and F three.
Okay, thank you, um moving on, uh we will open the floor for any public comments about any item that anyone cares to address with the board. Seeing no one coming forward, um I would like to motion for a resolution to adjourn the meeting. By Mr. By Mr. Walker.
Second, I'll second that.
Prisco, um all those in favor?
I.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, the next scheduled public meeting will be held on Tuesday, May thirteenth. Beginning with confidential session at six P M and seven and public session at seven P M at the Verona High School Learning Commons, have a nice week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adjourned at.